Good evening. It is seven o'clock and I'd like to call this meeting to the order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hersi?
Here.
Ms. Colacetti? Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Quizzenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
First order of business is approval of minutes of the previous meeting. We have minutes from August 7, 2023. Can I have a motion?
They're moved.
Second.
Moved by Chandra and seconded by James. Is there any corrections or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Alright, those are approved. Are there any additions to the agenda this evening? Nope, alright. Presentations and public input. I don't see any presentations listed, so we'll go ahead and move forward with public input. For anybody who would like to address the community, the hall, please step up to the microphone and state your name for the record. You'll have five minutes. Alright, seeing none. The next item of business is a staff report. Do you have staff reports this evening? So for our new business, we will start with ordinance number 2023-09033, an ordinance approving a final subdivision plat for Fieldstone subdivision plan number one, Plan Case 2478-S23 from Community Development. Is that Kevin? Marcus? There he is. Marcus, you have the floor for whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Nolan Atkins, on behalf of Fieldstone Investments, requests approval of a final plat for Fieldstone subdivision number one. The applicant wants to subdivide a 3.5-second acre tract of land into 14 lots to be developed for single-family homes. The subdivision would be part of the Stone Creek development. At its September 7, 2023, meeting, the Plan Commission voted unanimously with six ayes and zero nays to approve the preliminary plat and to forward the proposed final plat to City Council with a recommendation of approval as presented. Staff concur with this recommendation. City Council has approved preliminary and final plats for several sections of Stone Creek development since 1997. The proposed subdivision generally conforms to the configuration proposed in the original 1997 preliminary plat. The Urbana Land Development Code regulates preliminary, final, and concurrently submitted plats. Preliminary and final plats are required to show many items. The proposed final plat generally conforms to the approved preliminary plat and has been forwarded by the Plan Commission for council review. The property is located at the intersection of Colorado Avenue and South Stone Creek Boulevard, and the proposed subdivision is consistent with the R2 zoning district's development requirements and is consistent with the comprehensive plan's future land use designation of residential suburban pattern for the site. No waivers, deferrals, or variances have been requested from the requirements of the Urbana Land Development Code or the Urbana zoning ordinance. More background and site details are available in the staff report in the council Exhibit A. Staff findings are summarized in the council staff report. And we have some photographs of the site. This is looking southwest towards Lot 102 and northwest towards Lot 101. There are 13 lots on the south side of Colorado Avenue and one to the north. And then this is looking directly south towards lots 102 and 114, and the lower picture is looking north towards Lot 101. This is the preliminary plat in its entirety. This was reviewed and approved by Plan Commission. Preliminary plats do not get recorded. And this is a close-up. You can see Lot 101 on the left side, that's the north end, and then the 13 remaining lots on the south side of Colorado Avenue. And this is the final plat. And then zooming in on the final plat, again, there's a lot less detail in here. Most of that is shown in the preliminary plat, and Lot 101 is on the left north side, and the 13 lots are on the south end. Mr. Nolan Atkins, the applicant, is here to answer any questions you might have. And the recommendation is forwarded from Plan Commission to approve the requested, sorry, that should say, final plat, and then staff concur with the recommendation to approve that final plat and request that the ordinance be placed on City Council's consent agenda. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Would the applicant like to provide any comments? Or would you just like to wait for any questions? Okay, thank you. Are there any technical questions either for the applicant or for staff? Grace?
Thank you. I was wondering if this construction will be held to our new subdivision and land use requirements?
Yes, it would.
It will? Okay, thank you. And is there any change as far as drainage or any other technical things in this plan that need to be changed to meet our new standards?
No. And the drainage was already accounted for in the earlier stormwater management plan that was submitted years ago. As the plat gets reviewed and approved by the Engineering Division, they will continue to ensure that any drainage is handled, and as well as when we have any individual house developments, that drainage will also be reviewed. But the drainage requirements were already accounted for in the earlier plat development.
I'm just asking that there's not a significant change in any more strict standards in our current one that needs to change from the original plan?
Correct.
Thank you.
James?
Thank you. I'm looking at the map. It's actually right up there. And so this is the final plat for Fieldstone subdivision number one. I noticed to the south, there's additional land that follows Stone Creek down and around.
Yes.
Would that be a different subdivision if that came? It doesn't look like that has been platted yet.
Correct.
So that would be Fieldstone 2 or something like that?
Possibly, or whatever name the future developer might want to.
Same thing for the east side of the road there, but I think the east side of the road is maybe not owned by this group anymore?
I'm not sure who owns the property to the east.
Part of the university's property now, or the foundation's property?
Sir, sir, would you mind coming up to the microphone? Thank you.
Thank you.
You are correct. To the east is owned by the university, so that is their property. And then to the south, we're not involved with that parcel, so we wouldn't have any input on what is done there in the future.
That's a different private owner for that parcel?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I was just curious.
Any other questions?
I have a question, if I may.
Absolutely. Chandra?
The, I noted the street trees, they'll be installed just as they were previously. When you, when I looked at those photos that you showed of the plots with more trees on them, would those be knocked down and then the other street trees replanted, or what's the process for the trees?
As I understand it, the street trees that were installed that would fulfill the street tree requirement are those that are in the median, which are
Right.
these here, and those, as far as I know, would not be impacted or affected during construction.
Okay. And additionally, I saw in the minutes that Ms. Sims questioned about whether the HOA covenants had any language regarding inclusion or exclusion or equity, but I don't think that that question was really answered. Were you able to look at those HOA covenants?
The HOA covenants have not been submitted yet. That is not part of the final plating process. They would get recorded when the plat gets recorded. That is simply, though, a acknowledgement of that legal document and its list of restrictive covenants having been accepted by the city and recorded. The city does not get involved in private covenants.
Well, I just wondered if they exist currently, where they submitted with the previous plats, because it sounds like the HOA president intends to extend those covenants into the new, the new properties that will be coming on.
That would be a discussion between the applicant and the HOA president or the members of the HOA.
Okay, thank you.
As I said, the city doesn't get involved in establishing those covenants.
Chandra, did you have any other questions?
No.
Okay. Well, based on Chandra's question, I actually have a question on HOA. Does the city have the right to state whether or not HOA covenants can restrict the number of rental units, since we have human rights ordinance in place?
I would leave that to our legal counsel to answer. That has never come up during my time here.
Okay. It seems to be a progression with HOA lately, that they have decided that they don't want to have any rental units in the area. I'm not saying that that's the case in this instance, but it's something to kind of keep in the back of our mind. Okay. Any other technical questions? No. Oh, Grace?
Thank you. And it's my understanding that this is an enterprise zone. Is that correct? And so if they apply, would get the benefits of five-year progressive reduction and reduction of property tax contribution?
I did not research that. I could check that and come back with you at next week's council meeting or unless...
I can answer that.
Okay.
Yes, it is part of the enterprise zone.
Thank you.
James? Chris?
So, Kevin, how does it qualify for enterprise zone?
It is, it is in an area that is part of our established enterprise zone map that we adopted many years ago.
This isn't the federal one I'm thinking of. This is the city of Urbana.
Is it? Yeah, the one that's known as Think Urbana.
Okay, thank you.
I think you're thinking of the opportunity zone.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking of.
James?
I was curious, which AOA are we talking about when we're talking about an HOA playing into this? I was asking Chandra, actually, if she knows which HOA we're talking about. There's several around this area.
Well, so if I, oh, sorry. I'll let Chandra answer if she, if she wants, and then I can weigh in.
There was a letter included, Stone Creek Subdivision Homeowners Association. Which one that is, I don't know. That's all, it was a letter within the packet. Tom Roth is the president. That's all that I, I don't know a name of it. Stone Creek Subdivision, I guess, is the name.
So, to follow up on that, so that is a homeowners' association which covers, I think it's four or five of the previously platted subdivisions that are, I guess, collectively known, we all know just as Stone Creek, you know, the area that's been developed. It has not been established whether that HOA is going to govern the subdivision that we're talking about tonight. We don't have really any, any reason to say whether these or this subdivision tonight should be part of that HOA. That's a private matter.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Alright, I would entertain a motion.
I will make a question. I move ordinance number 2023-09033, an ordinance approving a final subdivision plat, Fieldstone subdivision number one, Plan Case 2478-S23, to the, to the council for approval on the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved by James and seconded by Chris. Any discussion? Grace?
I have some discussion, and there may be still a question in here for staff somewhere, sorry, that wasn't mentioned earlier. I want to go back to the HOA covenants. I think this is a really important issue. Historically, that raises a lot of red flags to hear that some of our most affluent subdivisions have covenants. They've historically been used for racial and wealth discrimination, or whatever else it may be. You mentioned renters is another great discriminatory use for these kinds of tools. So that raises, I think, huge red flags, and I appreciate Chandra bringing that up. So as far as saying, you know, the city doesn't get involved with private covenants and it's a private matter, I understand that to some extent, but also I'm not going to approve a discriminatory new subdivision for being built. So I'm not saying that is the case. That's not what I'm saying. My question here, I guess, maybe two questions. One is if it would be possible to have some insight into these covenants, because again, I'm not saying that's what they are. I just want to be sure that that's not what they are. So if we could have some information for that before next week, I would much appreciate it. And then also, you know, as Mary Alice kind of alluded to, what about the human rights ordinance? So where does that fall into play? Because I think that that's, for me, that's not the right attitude to just say it's a private matter, so the city has no place in it. If it's a different place, like that's where the Human Rights Commission and officer come in, and that's where it's restricted, I think that makes sense. But I would appreciate some more clarification on the covenant itself and how the city does monitor not having discriminatory covenants.
I think we would have that discussion with the executive and legal divisions, as it, I believe, falls outside of the planning division. But thank you for bringing it up, and we can check into it.
Alright, any other discussion? This is an ordinance, so we need a roll call, is that correct? Alright, well, the clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes, for now.
Mr. Quizzenberry?
Yes.
Alright, that motion carries on to the consent agenda at the next meeting. Next order of business is ordinance number 2023-09034, an ordinance amending the Urbana zoning map for 601 Kalarni Street, Plan Case 2477-M23. Is this yours as well, Marcus? Alright.
I wanted to apologize for being tardy.
No problem. We knew you were in the building.
Tom Clarkson, on behalf of the Urbana Country Club, requests to rezone 601 Kalarni Street from B1, sorry, B3, general business, to R4, medium-density, multiple-family residential. The proposed rezoning would permit the expansion of the country club, including construction of a maintenance building on the property. At its August 24 meeting, the Plan Commission recommended unanimously that City Council approve the request as presented. Staff concur with this recommendation. The site is located east of the Lincoln Commerce Center, Commercial Park on the east side of Kalarni Street. Here's the Lincoln Commerce Center. These two properties are zoned B3. The subject property is the one in the Speckles. To the south is Woodlawn Cemetery, and to the east is Urbana Country Club. Here's an aerial shot. The colored shaded areas are those within the city limits. You can see the can see the red and gray sort of corporation limits outlining here, coming around, and then going back around the other side of the country club, with the country club in the middle, and a residential subdivision outside the city limits. And then we have some photographs looking south towards Woodlawn Cemetery. Kalarney Street is here on the right-hand side, and then looking north towards I-74. The applicant wants to construct a new maintenance building for the country club on the property. The parcel must have a zoning classification that permits the principal use of the country club, as this maintenance building would be considered an accessory use of that country club. The current B3 zoning does not permit country clubs, while the proposed R4 district does. The property has been vacant since at least 1940. More background and site details are available in the staff report. The plan commission agreed with the findings of fact in the staff report, including that the proposed rezoning to R4 would be compatible with the park future land use designation by the 2005 comprehensive plan, and compatible with the adjacent CRE and County Ag II zoning districts. The public would benefit from the parcel being developed into any compatible use, including residential, park, or country club. So this is the snippet from the comprehensive plan. The subject property is here, and it's a split between the park future land use and the light industrial land use, with the institutional land use of the Woodlawn Cemetery to the south. As I mentioned, at the 24th of August public hearing, plan commission voted unanimously to recommend that city council approve the requested rezoning, and no issues were discussed. Staff concur with the recommendation to approve the requested rezoning. I'm happy to answer questions. Mr. Friend is here from the engineering firm representing Mr. Clarkson, and Mr. Clarkson is here, as well as Scott White. They can answer any questions you might have as well.
Would you like to say anything to the committee or wait for questions? All right, all right. Any technical questions for the applicant or for staff? James?
So, R4 is the most compatible for building a maintenance shed for a golf course?
Any residential zoning district, I believe, would permit the country club, as well as, I think, the CRE and maybe Ag zoning districts. But because of the potential for future multifamily residential development, staff recommended that they consider the lowest density multifamily residential designation, because it would also allow the country club to expand into that area.
Okay. And the country club's currently in the county, right? It's not in the city.
Part of the country club, most of the country club, the golf course is in the county, yes.
Cemetery.
Yes.
So this is just our part of this area that is in the city limits. Is the zoning for, like, Stone Creek R4, the golf course, the Atkins Golf Center?
I'm not sure. I could check that out for you next week.
I'm just curious. It just, it just, is there plans, or does the country club have a plan to build residential buildings on this land?
So if you look to the east, there is an annexation agreement that will be expiring shortly, and in that annexation agreement, these portions of the county-located land are treated as CRE and R4 by the city. There was a plan years back to develop medium-density multifamily residential, basically in the area where the maintenance building is. Those plans didn't materialize. I think it was a previous owner or previous operator. So I think there may be plans in the future, options, to build residential, but that's, you know, there, the, the language that was in the application was about building a maintenance building. We have a site plan that includes a maintenance building on it. But again, rezonings are for whatever land uses are in that zoning district, which in this case would include country club and medium-density, multiple-family residential. And I think in the packet for the plan commission, there are sheets, our zoning description sheets, that list all of the allowed and special and conditional uses in the existing B3 zoning district, as well as the R4.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Grace?
Thank you. Sorry, Marcus. I'm struggling to orient to this map. If you could help me again, because I see the country club is like in the middle of this picture. That's what I think of as the country club. If you drive, if I drive on that country club road, past the nature center and stuff, that's what I think of as the country club. But that's not what we're talking about right here, right? And that's in the county. The actual country club is not in Urbana. Is that right?
Correct.
That's in the county. Okay. So across the street in that highlighted section of B3
Yes.
is in Urbana, and that's the subject property.
Right.
Are there, in between those, the subject and the actual country club, yeah, where it's CRE and R4, is that also country club owned?
Yes.
And in Urbana?
Yes, and these are, no, no, it's out in the county as well.
Okay.
So anything that is in the city is shaded, showing its zoning district. Anything outside the city shows up with no shading and is in the county, except for this parcel, which is subject to an annexation agreement. And that annexation agreement has the city treat the land as if it is in the city for the purposes of zoning, among other things, building code. You know, if they wanted to build something on that property, they would build it according to the city's building code.
In that section, in purplish pink in B3 with the subject of what we're talking about here, is that, that's currently the only country club property in Urbana? Is that right?
This property, also to the north of that property, is theirs as well, but they are not choosing to rezone that at this time. And they recently acquired this, I think, maybe within the last five or six years.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Grace?
Okay, so currently, that's just banquet. There's nothing there at all.
Correct.
Okay, Woodlawn Cemetery has no desire to expand.
I have no idea.
You have no idea. Okay, does, okay, so who owns, who owns that property right now?
This property here?
The, the, the property that, yeah, the property that folks want to build on.
The Urbana Golf Club LLC, I believe, is its name.
Oh, okay.
They already own it.
I was gonna say, so the country club actually owns that property?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to get, because I got turned around, and I live around there, and I got turned around. So...
Yes, you drive by, and I think it's currently being cropped.
Well, you kind of have to go through the country club if, in, since I've really never been there. That makes it difficult to know that, that, you know, how, what roads actually lead off of Country Club Road up through the Urbana Country Club.
Right.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? Would somebody like to make a motion? Before we do that, Chandra, do you have any questions?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Oh, I would entertain a motion.
I will motion that ordinance number 2023-09-034, an ordinance amending the Urbana zoning map, 601 Kalarney Street, Plan Case 2477-M-23, be for approval and the consent agenda next week.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second.
I'm gonna give it to Chandra, James. Okay, okay. All right. So moved by Chris and seconded by Chandra. Any discussion? All right. Well, the clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
All right. That motion carries. Thank you very much, Marcus.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is ordinance number 2023-09-035, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, budget amendment number two, DCEO grant, and Carol.
Thank you. This, this was part of an omnibus budget amendment from the last committee of the whole and council meeting, and it was pulled out for a standalone, standalone consideration, which we appreciate, because it gave us a chance to reconstruct the sort of decision-making history. This is about a $1.5 million of a total DCEO grant of $2 million, and what we are proposing is to move it from Community Development Grants Fund Number 331 to the CRNI Fund, which is Fund Number 200. And the, the history is outlined in the memo, and Elizabeth Hannan is here to answer your questions, as is Tim Cowan. So just stand on the memo and respond to any questions.
Any questions for staff? Grace?
Thank you. Thanks for putting together some more information and having this discussion again so soon. My one question is, did we receive an additional million-dollar grant from DCEO specifically for fire station construction?
That has not been brought to council for acceptance yet, but we expect to do that soon.
But it's been, I guess, as far as DCEO awarded it, and we still need to accept it? Is that where that stands?
I would have to check on the status of it, but we have been, we have reason to believe that we will be receiving another million dollars from DCEO
Okay, thank you.
for fire stations.
Thanks.
Any other questions for staff? Chandra, do you have any questions for staff?
Yes, I do. I was just getting ready to come off mute. So in the memo, it said that seven out of seven, with the, talking about the, the survey, and I think it's missed, the date is written wrong. It says 2002, but I think you may have meant 22, October 22, but nonetheless. Support, strongest support for seeking grants, seven out of seven. Bonding additional funds, six out of seven. And you note, majority council, four out of seven, also supported CDBG and R proposals. To me, four out of seven is barely a majority. Nonetheless, yes, a majority. But I think that bonding and additional funds seems to even more outweigh, given the DCEO funds to the fire stations. Sorry, excuse me. And I understand that we've had this conversation sort of round and round, but I would like to suggest, well, I'll leave it at that. What was the, what was the, the thinking behind just using these funds instead of saying, okay, we, we're going to leave maybe half or, you know, all of these funds in community development because the, the council wants to see us do bonds or more grants?
I'm not sure I understand the question. I'm sorry.
So, so we've, okay, looking at the council goes and all of those things, we are wanting to use that DCEO money for other things aside from fire stations. Why wouldn't bonding and seeking grants be more considered or weighed more heavily instead of using the CDBG funds, in which, you know, council has said over and over that they would like to see other funds invested in other areas?
I just like a point of clarification, because I'm trying to understand as well. So, Chandra, are you suggesting that this particular grant is CDBG funds and not DCEO? Because DCEO and CDBG are two different things.
I'm sorry. Yes, you're right. The DCEO is inside community development, and so I keep confusing those.
Yeah, it is.
So, yes, so why, why aren't, okay, why that division of the funds, $500,000 and 1.5? Like, why only leave $500,000 in the capital development, community development, capital improvement plan, projects?
At the, at the moment, I, I, I'm sorry, I wasn't prepared to reconstruct the original allocation of the, the grant itself, but when we accepted the grant, and, and you're right, I'm so sorry that it's supposed to be October of 2022 was our, was our, our survey, but the, the grant was accepted, I think, in September, if I remember correctly, September of 2022, and it was at that time that the proposed allocation was approved, with the $1.5 million going to community development capital improvement projects. I, I didn't go back and, and refresh my memory about why that allocation and not more for the other items. So I apologize for that, but, but the fact is
That's fine.
that, that was the allocation, and so then we proceeded from that point. Is that, is that helpful, or is there more that you want me to respond to? I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's fine. You said you, you don't remember why that was the, the split of the money, and that's fine. And I also am looking at the slide that you included in the packet from, I'm not sure what, I don't remember what presentation that was from. Maybe it was the Capital Improvement Plan slide, where the heading is Grants, Awarded, Allocated, and Programmed. I think, I think when, when I saw the 1.5 DCEO grant for reconstruction fire stations two and three, I didn't know it was allocated. I thought it was, was still under awarded at the time of, of that presentation, because it's under, it has three different headers, I guess. So, but at the time of that, so I'm asking, at the time of this slide, it was under allocated, not awarded or programmed?
So I think, I'm not sure, I'm, I'm gonna turn to, well, I'll, I'll just let Tim answer. I'm not even gonna start. Go ahead.
It's page 68 in the packet or item S3?
Yes.
Yeah, I know what you're referring, Chandra, this is Tim. Yes, that essentially was awarded, and the allocation was happening through the CIP. Within the CIP itself, it's within the fund reports that showed the one and a half million of the DECO dollars going towards that, and the facilities project book showed us programming that 1.5 million in there for consideration. So as part of the CIP, the intent was that it was awarded, and we're allocating it, or slash, we don't program that money. It was allocated towards that within the CIP.
I see. Thank you.
Yep.
That's all the questions I have for you.
All right. Any other questions for staff? Grace?
Thank you. It's kind of a big question, but I guess to clarify, I guess let me word it this way. My understanding is that we don't have a very clearly defined picture of the situation with potential funding sources for the fire stations, that we have some ideas, but that that's not fully flushed out yet, and that we also haven't really considered potentials for using this one and a half million dollars for direct community impacts. So I'm just wondering if, if that is a correct assessment, that I feel like we don't fully have those pieces of information in detail, or if you feel like we do?
So I just want to clarify what Tim said. I'll put it in my words, because maybe it's a little more layperson-y. Then this is something that I learned in, in kind of unpacking this, which is through the CIP, this money is allocated, this $1.5 million is allocated to the fire stations. The council approved that when they approved the CIP. So that's, that's the state of play right now. It happens to be in Fund Three It happens to be in Fund 331, which is a grants fund, and it can be spent out of the grants fund, but for cleaner, more efficient bookkeeping and transparency on the fire station projects themselves, and if you need more on this, Elizabeth can probably elaborate, we're proposing through this budget amendment to allocate it, or spend it out of, transfer the money from the 331 fund, the grants fund, to the CRNI fund 200. It doesn't mean it can't be spent out of 331, but it's cleaner if it's spent out of 200. That's really what this is, the allocation for fire stations actually already took place, which I didn't appreciate until we unpacked this.
Sure, thank you for clarifying some things. I think that wasn't really my question, but I have some, that's okay, I have some thoughts on it, and I'll reclarify, but I appreciate some of that background. And especially saying that you didn't really understand the gravity of this being in the CIP, and I didn't either, I didn't notice it, it's mentioned two small items within tables in 108-page document while we were also doing the budget at the time. Maybe that's also around the time, our packet was 1,000 pages that week, I'm not sure, but yeah, I missed this one thing in all of that stuff, and I was not aware of it being in there. I see that it is on the slide in May, and I appreciate that it was pointed out on the slide presentation. Again, I must have missed this one, slash confusing it with other monies, because there's a lot of money, and there are other DCEO grants as well. So, I agree, I did not notice this, or give my intentional consent or approval for this in the CIP. And my question, when you say that the funds can be spent for fire stations anyway, even if we don't do this budget amendment, is that implying that that's the plan? Even if we don't move this money, it will be spent on fire stations regardless because it's in the CIP?
Well, I think there's, there's a number of challenges associated with changing course at this point, and that's one of the things we tried to, that we talked a little bit about when this was in front of council last week, which is the time limit for spending this money. So, and, and we have a signed grant agreement that we would need to amend, and, and I don't know what the, we have a grant agreement with DCEO. So, we would have to amend that, and we don't know that they would accept that, but we're on a clock, and if we don't spend the money on what is, it's approved for, then we'd just lose it.
I don't understand that piece, because we approved this a year ago, last September, 1.5 million for community development capital improvement projects, that was it. It seemed like you were saying that that meant that that was the direction that we were going towards fire stations, and that is not written in here, and that was not the conversation, that was not the discussion. It was very clear equals projects were brought up, other things were brought up, fire stations were mentioned by staff, not by council, and we did not have a conversation about that, and that's not where we left it. So, I don't understand why we would have to change anything as far as our grant agreement when we accepted it and allocated it for community development capital improvement projects.
We have a signed, a much more robust, lengthy signed grant agreement that followed on that initial allocation from DCEO, and this is why, in the sort of retracing our steps, we had the initial acceptance of the grant in these broad categories, and that was in September of 2022. And the reason why we had the two-by-twos as it related to the 1.5 million dollars, and I think it even says it on the little briefing sheet that we included here, was we were making, the staff was making the recommendation for two, two significant reasons what, that we were suggesting the allocation to the fire stations, and that was because we could spend it before the deadline, the June 30th, the 2024 deadline, and it was a good alternative for finance, or, you know, funding the fire stations, given the surveys that we had done, where council was giving us a really strong direction to seek grants, this is a grant. So then, with that direction, as opposed to sending us in another direction to include something different in the CIP, that's why it was included in the CIP. As Tim explained, it was called out on the slide presentation when we presented the CIP, then it was in, I would say, less important in the fund report, although that's technically important, but one of the reasons why, and this is, this is one of the pages that's included, this is from Section 4 of the CIP, we wanted the CIP to be easier for people to understand, and that's why we introduced this project-based, you know, we have the facilities book, we have the transportation book, and whatever, and it's project-based, so people can look and see a project and see where the funding is coming from. And so that is another place where, that we were on a, you know, we were on a, on a path, and if we were going to be on a different path, that, that was what we expected council to redirect us through those two-by-twos. If you wanted us to present something different in the CIP, we needed to know that so we could develop those alternatives. So, we're way down the road from that now. Not saying that we can't redirect, but that's, I, we can't take for granted that we can get through DCEO in a timely manner to then turn, turn around and figure out which projects we're going to spend this money on. And it's counter to the direction we got from, from council to seek grants.
Grace?
I would appreciate if we could please have the actual agreement from DCEO, because we accepted this in September. I'm not sure if you're saying that we accepted some money specifically that we said would go towards fire stations then, or if that was amended in March?
No, the agreement wasn't until, it was transmitted back to us, I think it was fully executed in early June of '23.
So, yeah, I would appreciate if we could have that agreement. Again, I don't, I don't agree with having two-by-two private meetings as a way to decide major things like this. And if I could go back to the other question that I was trying to ask a few questions ago, was, again, I feel like we don't have full information about, for instance, could or how could we use this 1.5 million on direct community benefits still? What are the options there? And on the other hand, more details about the fire station funding. What would be the impact if we didn't use this? We already got an additional million, if we swapped that out, is there another half a million we could take somewhere else? What would be the interest difference over the lifetime of bonds if it were reduced? I feel like there's a lot of details that we don't have answers yet, and I guess that was my question, is do we, do you feel like we have those things? Because my impression is that we don't have all those pieces of information yet.
I feel like we could, each step of the way, we could be asking ourselves those questions. So, you're saying at this juncture, can we ask ourselves a question about, well, what if we didn't allocate the 1.5 million dollars to the fire station project as a grant, and then we were bonding that amount, and so what's the impact of that? We can ask ourselves those questions as we proceed, but I do want to clarify that the purpose of the two-by-twos was not to make a decision, it was to, we needed direction because we put the CIP together, we want to be, we don't, like, if you say, I'm going to give a, like, maybe this is a really dumb analogy, but if you, if we say, look, we want, we're going to, we're going to be putting, we're going to be painting, we're going to be putting blue signs out for what's for something, and, and so we say, we're going to be ordering blue signs, and is everybody on board with blue signs? And then if we get to the point where we're actually going to order the blue signs, and people go, no, we're, we want green signs, then it's like, well, if we had known that we, that people wanted green, then we would have been proceeding with, with that. And so it was to get that sense of, do you agree with the direction that we're going? Because that has cascading effect as it relates to the CIP and subsequent decisions. So, we can revisit decisions as we go, but there's a cost to, there's a cost to the organization, there's a risk that we, that we won't be able to spend the money on time, and there's an impact, as you noted, on the fact that we might end up having to bond more and spend more on interest. We can reassess at, you know, at various points, but that, that does, that, we expect that once decisions get made, then we continue to kind of progress in a direction.
Sharice?
I guess, a question that I have, and not for staff, but for Grace, actually, what is direct community, what is that? Direct community, what did you say?
Using it as kind of a broad term for things that would directly impact the community, like if we did another round of equals grants, or the youth service grants, or violence intervention programs, things that would have a direct impact on the community.
So, you don't think that having a fire station has a direct impact on the community?
I don't think that using this 1.5 million from DCEO will have a direct impact on the community.
I'm sorry, could you please explain?
I think we're going to build fire stations, and we're going to provide basic services of good quality fire service, regardless of whether we use this money from DCEO to build fire stations or not. I don't think there will be any improved service for residents by taking money from this pool rather than from other pots of money.
All right, I'm going to ask that this be left to a discussion point, so I'd like to reserve this question, this time for, specifically for questions to staff. Anybody else have any questions for staff? Shandra, did you have any questions for staff before we move on?
No, I have no further questions, thank you.
Okay, all right. So, at this point, I would entertain a motion.
I move for ordinance number 2023-09-035, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, budget amendment number two, DCEO grant, be moved for approval for, to city council next week.
Moved by Sharice and seconded by James. Discussion. James?
So, I'm glad we had more time to talk about this, because it was clearly needed at the last meeting, because it wasn't discussed at the, fully at the committee of the whole the previous week. I will, I will say that, first, I want to go on the record to say that I find the two-by-twos a very efficient way to share detailed information and to ask questions. I don't think there's ever been a two-by-two where I've learned things that I thought were important to share, that I haven't subsequently commented, asked questions, or discussed that when the decision was being made. It's been clear to me from the beginning that we need to replace these two fire stations. In order to do so, we have given staff guidance through feedback that they've asked for us, to try to support that with grants. I am, I am satisfied that we can legally use this money that comes from the state. If that's 2.5 million dollars that we don't have to bond and put on the burden of the public, I'm, I'm going to support that. I would also consider if there were options that were possible, feasible, that we could mitigate that, that as we get closer to the time where we're actually bonding, and somebody explains where interest rates are going to be at that time in the future, that if there are projects like that, and it is feasible to do them, we could spend less of this on the fire station. But I haven't heard what those particular projects are, and I don't know that it's feasible, that they could be implemented by, I believe I heard, the end of June 2024. Is that the right date? So, I'm, I, I don't know in my mind that it matters whether this budget amendment occurs, because we passed the, the capital improvement plan. It was in there, it was, it was clear, it was allocated that way, it's a legal source of funds from grants. I believe that these fire stations are in locations where they support our communities, particularly our communities that could benefit from that, and so I'm going to vote for this, but I don't think it matters in the end whether this particularly passes or not.
Sharice?
I'm just, I think I just want to say regarding the building of the fire stations in general, we asked the city to find alternative funds for this to take place and happen, and that's what they did. And whether you really think about it or not, that says something to the residents of those areas and how you value them, or whether you value them at all. It is a direct, it does have a direct impact on the community, in, in that it, we're hoping to have, you know, keep the, those particular fire stations staffed with very well-practiced and well-educated, so to speak, in the fire industry at least, fire, fire officers, and, and we also, I'm hoping, at least for the fire station in my ward, that that fire station can be a part of the community, that this is a place where our fire stations, our firefighters can be role models for the young children in my, in my ward, and in my direct subdivision, because that's where this particular firehouse will be, will be housed. It'll also help, I believe, in my ward particularly, hopefully bring up property values, hopefully show the community that is surrounding it, that they are a valued members of the city of Urbana. And on more than one occasion, the firehouse already that is so small, you can hardly get the fire trucks in it, has been invaluable to not just the surrounding neighbor, community that, you know, where they go, you know, make calls to help people get picked up off the floor, or to help somebody that is sick and can't be determined what, you know, they've fallen and they can't get up, so to speak. Those are the kinds of services a lot that that fire station has, serves in my community, as well as, when I think about it, when I was first appointed, one of the most important things was that they were first on the scene when a champagne church was going up in flames. So, there is a direct service to our community, to our area. So, I would like to keep that in mind when you're thinking about, you know, making the city jump through a bunch of hoops, which they've jumped through, but if we said that we're going to use grants, and you're against spending any other of the monies, I don't know where you, where you, where one expects grants to come from, except from the people that we get grants from. And if we can use those monies, I think that it's, it behooves the city of Urbana to use those monies to keep our fire stations up to date and keep our communities feeling safe regarding those particular services.
Anybody else would like to offer discussion? Chris?
Thank you. In thinking about what to do with the 1.5 million DCEO grant, some points to consider. What is the Department of Commerce and Economic Development about? From their website, their mission statement reads as follows. "The mission of the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity is to create equitable economic opportunities across the state of Illinois by attracting and supporting major job creators, investing in communities, strengthening Illinois world-class workforce, fostering innovation, ushering in the new clean energy economy. DCEO works to fortify Illinois's reputation as a global economic power." D C E O works to fortify Illinois' reputation as a global economic powerhouse while ensuring Illinois is the best state to live, work, and do business. So the point is, it's not that we told staff to go get grants, it's which grants are you gonna take? And I would submit that it is inappropriate to take a D C E O grant. There is no definition I could find this morning about what the D C E O grant, and I would piggyback Alderman Person's, Wilkins' request for, I'd like to see the paperwork of the grant and what it was, you know, what we were applying for. Because under the C, and I did hear that tonight that we did move money from community development to public works with this grant. So looking at D C E O's management of C D B G grants, it specifically says you cannot use them for government buildings such as city halls, police stations, or fire stations. So below is a list of capital improvement projects from the city, Urbana City Council goals that I think would be more appropriate for this grant from the F Y 2223 that would be a better use of this 1.5 million D C E O grant and in keeping with the, what I think is the intended spirit of D C E O funding. Strategic area number four, economic recovery and development. Strategy number three, recruit new businesses and industries. Action step B, create an incentive package and recruit a new grocery store and essential services to northwestern Urbana. We could use the 1.5 to create an incentive package for a grocery store. Or strategic area number four, I mean, number three, infrastructure. Strategy number two, increase investment in infrastructure equity. Action step B, implement equal selected projects. Action step C, develop budget and strategy to take advantage of infrastructure grant funding for underserved areas and prepare for grants for shovel-ready projects. Or strategic area number two, housing. Improve, strategy number two said, improve housing quality. Action step A, pursue funds to rehabilitate dilapidated homes in targeted neighborhoods. Or action step B, provide targeted assistance for home rep, rehabs and repairs for seniors, persons with disabilities, and low-income households. Or we could consider re-subdividing the proportions and categories for the 2 million D C E O grant because it's clearly that staff, when they got the grant in August 22, and I re-watched the September 19th council meeting, Sheila Dodd had already budgeted the 1.5 and then let it slip, well, that's for fire station, uh, fire department is what she said. And then it was the administrator who suggested to Alderman Wu's question about what about equal proj, equal projects, it was suggesting, yeah, we could do that, or we could do fire stations. So that was when we first introduced the idea of using this D C E O grant as a fire station project. So we could put better emphasis and priority on our number one strategic area, violence prevention. And we could also, our other priority was affordable housing, and that's strategic area number one, public safety and well-being. Pursue methods to mitigate community violence. Action step A, fund community partners that address the root causes of community gun violence. Or strategy number three, promote community well-being. Action step A, fund and support community partners that promote health and wellness. And strategy area number two, housing. Support strategy number one was support housing security and equity. Action step B called for determine the amount of ARPA funds, I would submit D C E O funds, to set aside to align with the identified needs and gaps in home ARP, the home ARP action plan. And action step C, coordinate with housing and social service agencies to reduce homelessness. Those are the direct benefits I believe Alder Person Wilkin is trying to refer to. Thank you for letting me speak.
All right, Chris, would you take the chair for a moment?
I will take the chair and recognize Mariella.
Thank you. So, you know, as we reflect on, we've been talking about the firehouses for quite some time. And one of the things, and we've done a lot, the staff has done a lot, not only working with different engineers in terms of development, giving us lots of different options in terms of what we were gonna build, having an open house. But I'll tell you one of the things that, there's two really big things that resonated with me as we talked about these firehouses. The first one was just walking into the firehouses. I mean, I, hopefully people saw the firehouses going right by right now. Hopefully people saw the pictures, if, if, there were pictures of the interior, but if you actually physically walked in the firehouses, I mean, they're, they're a tight squeeze, there, there's not a lot of room in there. But what really resonated with me was when we had the open house about the possible construction and two brand-new young firefighters walked in. And I asked them, I said, so, tell me, you know, you guys have been on the job for a couple of months, what's it like? And I said, oh, we, we love working at the fire station. I said, but what, what are the firehouses like? I said, well, we work over on Lincoln. I said, it, it's not really weatherproof over there. The snow comes in, we had a whole, we had to dig ourselves out because there's, there's a gap in the, in the door and all the snow blows in, it's cold in there. You know, so these are two very energetic young people who had agreed to join the firefighters of Urbana and are working up in the Lincoln Fire Station that we are planning to hopefully demolish soon and, and start rebuilding. And, and I bring this up because I think that there's a couple of things that I'd like to keep in mind as we talk about the firehouses. One, we are an employer, right? We have to offer safe working environment for people. But two, what does it say about our communities and the types of facilities that we build for people to work in those communities? We have to be able to build an inviting and well-functioning firehouse for both Firehouse Two and Firehouse Three. Both of those areas are in desperate need of them. Now, I'm not gonna pretend that this is a cheap endeavor by any stretch of the imagination. We are not gonna get out of spending down our general budget. We're not gonna get out of it by not borrowing money. We're gonna have to do this in, in a strategic way for us to be able to build the right way. I, I understand people's concern about grants, but grants are there for a purpose. We don't say, hey, there's not a grant out there to, to build a firehouses specifically. So we can't just go out there and apply for a grant to build a house specifically, a firehouse specifically. The reason I go into this and, and perhaps I misunderstood what Chris had said, but when he was reading the, what the D C E O does, it says, invest in community. Those are the words that, that, that were part of that mission statement. And to me, this is investing in that community. It's investing in those areas in Urbana who need new infrastructure to be able to support the residences and the businesses in those areas. All right, and with that, I'll take the chair back.
Chair, it's given back to Mariella.
Thank you. Chandra?
I like, yes. I, I'm totally not against the fire stations. I voted for the fire stations before, understanding the, you know, updating, remodeling, better living situations for our firefighters. I just wanted, I appreciated this extra time to have these discussions and, and I appreciate Carol going in and kind of giving us a timeline and refreshing our memory where things were in the C I P as well as the budget. I just, I also understand that, you know, I'd rather have grants fund these things than taking out, you know, large bonds or whatever loans to cover this work. And I don't think that it says or sets a precedent that we care more about one thing than the other. I think that this says that we care about both because the fire station is a place of, it can be a place of community within our community. And so we want the fire stations to be inviting, as Mariella said. So I, I will be supporting this. I'm glad I was able to ask my questions and get, you know, majority of them answered. So it's, I, I think this is an opportunity where we can, you know, do something within our fire stations. Our firefighters are role models and that can work to reduce violence. If there's, you know, things coming out of there, you know, we have a firefight day where they come around the, the fire station and, you know, explore the job opportunity there. You know, it's, it's teaching safety in the community, whether that's fire safety or, you know, CPR or whatever the case. I think that we are doing both in rebuilding these fire stations. So I don't, I don't see it as a this or that in this, in this case. We've been faced with a this or that before and I don't see that in this case. So that, that's all, thank you.
Thank you. And I think Grace, you had your hand up? Yes.
Thank you. I have quite a few thoughts and points. I will try to lay them out clearly and concisely and then leave it at that. One thing is about the two by twos, everyone has their own opinion. I don't think it's efficient because it takes time out of my work schedule, everyone else's time for staff. They now have three to four separate hour-long meetings instead of having one conversation all together in public. I think some of the problem is then when we say, well, you already approved it in two by twos, which has come up before. This case, not quite, because we did pass it in the C I P and I didn't notice that. But in the past, like the crisis co-responder team, I think that's the problem, is when we have the two by twos and say, well, now the decision's already made. You said blue in two by twos, that's what we already ordered, so now it's too late to change it. And that has happened before, or just say, we don't get to vote on it at all. I also want to clarify the difference between when we say looking for grants for fire stations versus C D B G. And I think this was kind of back to one of Chandra's earlier questions with some of the hard distinction, because this is a grant that's in a C D B G fund that we would be moving. I think for me, the difference is talking about, what I meant by that was looking for grants specifically.
It is not in the C D B G fund and it is not a C D B G grant. Just want to clarify that. It's in the Community Development Fund.
Oh, yes, Community Development, not Community Development Block Grant, right?
That's very, that's two very different things.
Yes, thank you. So what I meant with searching for grants would be looking for grants specifically for fire stations, like the one that we did do, and I think that's awesome to expect an additional million dollars, not by using community grants for this purpose, but by seeking out grants specifically for this. I think that obviously fires, stations and department are essential, and for me, that's not what this issue is about. I think that's distracting from the actual issue. This is about how to fund the construction. Whether we're going to construct them or not is not a question and hasn't been a question. Where, the way I see it, we're going to build them and that ball's already rolling. This D C E O money is not going to make them any better. We're not talking about enhancing them or building anything extra. We're just talking about using this money so that we can reduce our bonding or other contributions. So I agree, fire stations are important and we're gonna build them either way and that's, that's gonna happen and that's what we need to do. This is about using this pot of money for them. So some of my thoughts are, I think this money should be spent on direct community impacts, like Chris listed, from our, from other community need or from our council goals rather than fire station construction. I think that this shows that we're saying that a priority of reducing debt is more important than those direct community impacts to low-income and most socially vulnerable residents. If we expect another million coming in for fire stations, that would leave just, if we swapped that out, that would leave just half a million dollars that I think we could find from other places, such as the general fund balance, maybe delaying some non-essential other capital work on city buildings. I think that it's right for the city to manage our existing budget for capital expenses for basic services, which are important and not at the expense of other opportunities. I think we can and we would, if we didn't use this money for fire stations, we would find other sources of funding and, but are we gonna replace this 1.5 million for the community? I don't think so. I think it's just gone. I think this is make or break it for these community project opportunities and it's not make or break it for the fire stations. We're going to do these either way and I think that we could find other ways to do it. I think that it's also a little premature. I think that more information would have been great, premature slash also a year delayed. I understand some of the timeliness. I would appreciate more information for options, how we could spend this for community development and what are the details of financing the fire stations. So these are my thoughts and opinions. They're not really up for argument, but I will accept questions. I plan to vote no to moving this money and again, I'm interested in further conversation if that is the way that things go. Otherwise, if it's decided already, then I suppose we won't.
Thank you, Diane.
There's a couple of things I'd like to address. First of all, I want to make it very clear, I could not, I could not be in any, state any more strongly than I can tonight, that, that there is no more fundamental public safety or direct community benefit that we could provide than a modern, efficient, safe fire station that will service for the next 50 years. People depend on those fire stations for medical calls, for, of course, for fire, responding to fires, for many other types of service. The people, and we forget about the people working in the fire stations. We, as elected officials, have a responsibility to provide a safe, clean, decent, working environment and those stations are not. They were built before people thought about toxic chemicals and separating sleeping quarters from the equipment and engines, before we had female firefighters and a very, you know, variety of other things. So we, as elected officials, have a responsibility to think about the direct community benefit, but also the, our responsibility as an employer, not only today but into the future. We are responsible for providing the service. We also are responsible for being fiscal, you know, taking care of the taxpayers' dollars. And every dollar we get in a grant means we have to borrow less and pay less interest. And that's very important in this day and age. And you just don't go out and get grants for fire stations. D C E O, this is absolutely an appropriate use of D C E O funds. There is direct community benefit. And we just got finished allocating $10 million in American Rescue Plan Act funds. Most of that money addresses root causes of community violence. Much of it addresses housing security, food insecurity, youth programming. We can't sit here and say we have not funded in the last year, community organizations addressing many of the needs that were outlined in the council goals. Can we do more? Of course we could, but this is an opportunity and an obligation for us to build the stations using the funds we can secure, reducing the amount by any way we can, the amount that we have to bond, which then preserves funds to do other things for the people of Urbana. But to, to, to have this as an either or situation, you know, we want programs that are, have a direct community benefit, but a fire station doesn't provide that, that's, that's absolutely false. The fire service is one of your fundamental community services. No doubt about it.
Charisse.
I just want to say something and, you know, Chris and I had a very long conversation last week. Providing a more up-to-date and clean and, and efficient firehouse in my ward would probably make all the difference in whether or not even a grocery store shows up in my ward. Because that can be the beginning and probably a, a, a mitigating factor in anyone, any one, because we can't force grocery developers to build in my ward. There hasn't been a grocery store in my ward since I was a teenager or pre-teen even. So I would think that if such a business really wanted to, you know, be there, they, they would have been there by now. That's number one. Number two, I think it would, I think it would, it helps. And as Diane said, possibly. And as Diane said, possibly, you know, when we talk about violence prevention, you can't prevent violence, you can reduce violence, you can subdue it, but prevention is not something unless you know some way to get into somebody's soul to stop it before it starts. And we're, we don't have the minority report happening here where there's pre-crime, okay? That doesn't happen. We don't have somebody going, oh, my gosh, they're going to, you know, we don't have that, that's not happening. So violence prevention is a misnomer. There's no such thing as violence prevention. We can, and we have put monies toward violence and trauma and violence and, and, you know, trying to, to take, move folks into another direction. We put monies toward that, that's, there's been monies toward that. But one of the things my neighborhood could use is role models. A lot of times, that's one of the strongest subduers to violence. Role models, positive role models. And I think that that is something that, that firehouse could, could very well be in my, in my community. I went to King School when it was Hayes School. And I went to King School when it was turned into King School. And that firehouse that's on Lincoln Avenue was there the entire time I was, I was going to that school, but not once do I remember us taking a walking field trip to visit the fire station. And if we have something that is that visible now, that is something that I believe could help with the children that are, that attend King School, that is a, an educational field trip that they could make, that the, the children in my neighborhood that are growing up and, and, and just seeing those, those people as role models. And the thing is, is that the fires, the firefighters also, you know, supply safety tips, they go in your house and inspect for carbon monoxide and smoke detectors and they supply those things for the community. So the, the firehouses, even now, as raggedy as they are, are not a part from the community that they serve. They are a part of the community, but the housing is just not adequate. And that's all I, that's all I want for the firefighters in my ward is that they have adequate housing while they are serving my community.
All right, I think everybody's had an opportunity to state their position on this. At this time, I'd like to ask the clerk to call, roll. Well, yes, we had Sharice moved it and James seconded. Sorry.
Did that go to the consent agenda or just the regular agenda? It can't, okay. Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
No.
Percy?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkins?
No.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
All right, that moves forward to the city council agenda for next week. That is all the new business for tonight. The next item is council input and communications. Would anybody like to offer input today? Chris?
I appreciate tonight's conversation. I want to reiterate that the issue tonight was about the appropriateness of using a D C E O grant. But we've spilled into about the fire stations and I have a whole lot to say about fire stations in this project. I've been studying this for a good, long time. But, and I wasn't going to say anything about the fire stations, but I'll do this because I think it's time we move this along a little bit. And that is that we need to stop with this four-out-of-seven quarterback sneak game that's going on. And instead, I would challenge the News Gazette to do a photo essay of both Fire Station Two and both Fire Station Three and prove to the citizens of Urbana beyond a reasonable doubt that those two fire stations need to be torn to the ground completely. The citizens of Urbana are the ones that are going to fund this for decade, are about ten to fifteen years, paying the interest, the forty-six percent inflation rate, and the millions upon millions of dollars that this will cost. So I would ask the News Gazette to do a photo essay and prove it to the citizens of Urbana. They're the ones that are going to have to pay for it and prove that those state, those two fire stations need to be torn to the ground. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Are there any other council input this evening? Sharice?
Yes, I, I want to state something, I may be going to go to the fire station thing because I'm kind of torn up regarding the Hope Village thing. And I've gone to a couple of meetings regarding how this particular project is going. And the challenge I have is, that's a good idea. The News Gazette could actually do more, more reporting into that and investigating because the word that I'm getting, and it's unfortunate, and the word that I know from being at one of the meetings, is that everything is not copacetic with this particular project. And I would really like for our planners and our public works people to go out and have a looksee at the site and see what's going on. Because what I'm getting from Champagne officials as well as the residents of Carver Park is that they were told that not to park on the streets because they, Carl was going to be bringing, doing, moving their, their work equipment in there. And the city of Champagne had no idea that any of this was going on. And I feel like if, I know they, they probably felt quite comfortable, you know, hoodwinking the city of Champagne. It did come to a screeching halt when they found out. But if they, if they're bold enough to do that, to just feel like they have the authority to tell the, the citizens of another city where they're going to have access and how their streets are going to be, if they're bold enough to do that without the input of the city and the citizens that are in that area, I would not be the least bit surprised that they're not doing the same to us. And we need to take a more proactive step to make sure that they are sticking to the ordinances that we have put forth, have been put forth through any other developer, any other person developing such a site and that they are doing what they said that they were going to do. Mainly because we rewarded them ARPA funds. And as my understanding from what the RPC rules were, was that if you're not doing it right, you have to pay it back. So I think we need to be more vigilant regarding this thing. I know it sounds good, it pulls on the heartstrings, it's, and no, no one that I have talked to at any of these meetings from Champagne or Urbana is against the Hope Village being built. They are not, however, willing to feel like they are being ramrodded and that their civil rights are being violated by this particular institution. So that's what I'm going to say.
Any other council input?
Yes, I'd like to say something.
Okay, go for it, Chandra.
I, I, I'd like to say, first of all, that violence prevention is a thing and that the goal of violence prevention is to reduce or eliminate the occurrence of violent behavior and the harmful consequences. Yes, it's a complex and multifaceted thing, but I would like to say that it is real and exists. Some approaches to violence prevention is education and awareness, conflict resolution and mediation, mental health support, community programs, policy and legislation, victim support services, economic and social interventions, domestic violence prevention, gang intervention, school-based programs, crisis hotlines, the, the list goes on and on. And we see that happening in our community, yes. Even though violence still exists, violence prevention does work and does exist. And it's, successful prevention often requires a multi-pronged and coordinated approach involving government agencies, elected officials, healthcare providers. And so if we're saying that violence can be prevented out in public, then it won't go away. So I just want to lay that out there because I heard tonight that it doesn't exist and it wouldn't be deemed a public health crisis if it didn't exist. Thank you.
All right, I that believe everybody's had an opportunity to speak tonight. And with no further business before this committee, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.